Second, we're going to move on. So we ready? I am going to open up the 2024 Select Board meeting. All to order amendments to the agenda. I have a couple. We need to add some amendments to the agenda. We had tabled the morning of bids for Flatiron Road. Until we have references, we need to revisit that. We need to get that going in. Also, there's a little hiccup with the Minas bid on Downhill San Diego. At that, at the end. And we also need to fill in that ass last week when they were making the notebook at ROR for permission to extend the dating. And we had a phone conversation with three of us for adding more dating for $50,000 of our performance. So we need to add this. Not hearing any other amendments. Could we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 15, 2024?
I'll make that one.
So we have a motion or second to approve the May 15, 2024 minutes. Do we have any corrections, revisions, additions? Hearing none? All those in favor? Vote, so carry it. Comments from the community? From the community?
I just wanted to record thanks to LCP Stephen Ryan. Please want to applaud that informational meeting with the school board. A lot of work. Belinda, all the GOPs, like everybody put in a lot of work yesterday. I just want to say thanks behalf of this resume.
We did get one letter from the Law Housing Partnership just talking about upcoming public informational meeting, a membership vote on Monday, June 17th at 3:00 PM at the Williams Center in Morrisville. And then that's to do with, and we are a member because we give money in appropriation to them. Members who voted on the following articles show the members of the Law Housing Partnership Incorporated approve the disposition of the corporation's hard-earned assets in developed territory to Gilman Housing Trust Incorporated, doing business as Laurel Edge, and merger of the corporation with Downstreet Housing and Community of Hope. We have a tax payment request. Krista Perkins had written to Kirk and then relayed it over to me. I thought she was coming tonight. But hello, so sorry. I emailed the wrong person. I didn't realize there's been a change. I'm going to try and make it to the town meeting in June. If I get out of work on time. I did not realize that last year's property taxes hadn't been paid. I applied and submitted it to the VHAP program last year, but they cut it. I never received word from them that they did not get paid. So I apologize for that as for this year's property taxes. I was out of a job for over six months and I'm back to work full-time, but I'm trying to catch up on all my deals at the same time. I really need to make a payment plan. I could pay $480 a month until caught up. I was going to put a down payment through my tax return, but I had to verify my identity with the IRS and they said it will take up for another nine weeks. Now to get them back and I don't want to wait that long to start paying on them. I can even pay 120 a week to equal the 180 a month. I would just have to know who to make the money order out to and I could bring it to the office every Friday because I have Fridays off. This is the only way I can afford to pay my taxes right now. Thank you. Krista Perkins.
As the person who sends out the delinquent tax notices, she's notified every month of how much is due. So I don't know why she thought last month's was paid when she received notice every month.
So we have in the past worked with Krista. There's a worry now. And part of the deal was she was trying to clean up her yard, her property. And we were going to let her do charge accounts at the landfill also.
If she cleaned up any?
It looks worse than ever. She owes us $641 still for our landfill. And she owes us $5,011.71 of that of taxes.
I wouldn't.
I'm sad I'm watching.
I'll make a motion if we don't. Give her the pain additional. We wait and then what she already has. That's obviously a good significantly on several levels.
She's on a tax.
So Mr. Davies, you know, retired. I found a new tax lawyer, but there was only four at that point and he wanted more. So in September, I'm sending it all home.
It's not a burden becoming a super front side, isn't it? And it's on our all of the way.
Yeah.
It's just, it's not getting better. So we should get hold of that government?
Well, actually Kirk can probably talk to you about this, but I believe the state is
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Krista Perkins.
Yeah.
Isn't this thing working with her? On cleanup?
Well, according to Burner, yes. But we've kind of heard that for the past three years. My last interaction with the state was that they told us they had it under control and to stay away. But Burner did report at the last meeting that he was getting them back on board. That's about all I know. I would be surprised if anything happened there.
And by my own.
So we have a motion on the table to not accept the payment plan for taxes. Do we have a second? We have a first and second. Do we have any other further discussion on this? All those in favor?
I am.
You want to post?
It's pretty obvious historically that we've been over backwards in what we're doing. What's not happening?
Okay, remember, I have a couple of people that responded to our vacancy ads. The first one is a scribe. We have with us tonight Azol Landis. She has moved to Woken recently. It's very interesting, the scribe position. So I invited her to come and sit with Deb and see what goes on. We talked a little bit about it. So maybe she can explain and your background and why you want the job.
Yeah, my background is in special education. I before I moved here, it's about eight months ago, I ended up working as a special education teacher with family disabled students that had different complex medical needs that were on earth. And since I've been here, I am working at the M and M Mother's Health Group. My is very different than where else and I want to learn more about. I've never lived anywhere except for major cities. So this is a huge change for me and I want to learn a bunch about the community and be involved with the community. It seemed like a good way. I seen within myself that, you know, I, as a special education teacher, one of the roles is selecting the individual education meetings, same meetings and different part of roles together. People described taking minutes in very similar content as describing where not for real, but kind of the gist. That's in a professional tone. So it feels like something that I could do and I'm very eager to be involved. It's a good way.
And the flexibility of working at night and so on.
Yeah, yeah.
Also, any questions? Azol?
Can you read your own handwriting?
I can. You probably can.
Oh, that's okay. As long as you can read it, it will be all right.
So you do have, and you can type them up your computer and you can email them? So I would suggest that we hire Azol as our new scribe. No, Deb, too, in the morning?
I want you to know that you can bring your donor to call.
I'll make it. Now I have to be there.
Just like I did. You just say, go get your coffee.
We already made a formal motion. All right, I'll make a motion that we hire Azol. Question one, membership as our new scribe. Second.
If you'd like to, Law Housing's favor.
I am. All right.
Post, carry. Welcome to Azol.
I told Azol that it's been just a little over six years that I've been scribe for the year. And hasn't, I haven't looked it up. Fortunately, everything's online. So and I told Azol that I, well, obviously have really enjoyed her time as scribe. And so I'm happy to meet her and give her my best wishes. And I hope your state here is at least as one of my favorites. Good luck to you. Thank you, thank you.
Now Deb is going to be on call 24/7.
Better internet service there. I bet I did. Yeah. Yeah. Give me the night off.
It sure washes on you.
Now that makes you leaving her room work because you could do it from Chicago, but you won't.
So we have one more meeting before you move.
No.
No? You're not moving till the 17th.
That's the meeting, isn't it?
Oh, that's maybe the good things to know.
No, your meeting is the 19th.
Oh, right. On level fun meeting.
Uh, no.
Hey, who's the kid tonight?
I was gonna ask you. You know? When you were done though. After you, after you take the minutes. Can I scribe the minutes?
Yes.
Well, we really, really appreciate it. Reliability and good minute taking.
Did you, I'm listening.
I did not.
Six years.
That is one workout I could care.
And she's good to the cat.
Says a lot about my life.
You're saying it's boring?
I want to thank you for being good to the cat.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Hey, the mayor.
He makes you be nice. We just.
Oh, thank you. We're listening.
Thanks.
I'm doing that. Wait, let me see if the audio is boosted.
Okay, I don't know how it works. So I had two people interested in the senator position. So I met with both of them. Wanted our neighbor over here in the light blue house, Robert Crumb. Got with him Sunday. And he currently works in evenings at Copeland Hospital. He's worked there for 20 years doing a court care specialist. And he says he's done all kinds of cleaning out, aspects of cleaning. And before 30 years at Copeland, he was in 20 years of leading the unit as the janitor. He's across the street. I kind of explained the hours and stuff. And went over things with him briefly. And then there is also Seth Thompson. And Seth is interested in the cleaning position. He, I want to be. So he is someone who would be with support, he supported employment.
He'll have a trainer with him training him. That's what I used to do for a living.
Yes.
All the time, I think. That's the whole, he has the whole time super right.
Yes, yes. Depends. Sometimes you can get him trained well enough to let him go. It just depends on.
I've had some that could do it and I've had some that could never do what you still like to do. We had a cleaning crew all the place traps.
So he's coming on of Royal Medical Health Services. And he brought, she brought it for him. Dear Linda, I'm interested in the five-hour cleaning position you currently have open. Please consider me. I'm available most anytime. I'm detail oriented as long as I know what is expected of me. I'm a quick learner and I have reliable transportation. I would be so happy to meet for an interview. And I asked him to, after I met with them, if he couldn't send me a little bit more about, if he had any experience. Dear Linda, thank you for meeting with Seth today. Seth has been a part-time independent contractor for AMC Associates and has performed the following duties. Sweeping, mopping, doing odd jobs, cleaning the money magnets for the past five years. And it gave me a rep of silver. So I told both of these individuals that there were two people that had applied for the position. The board would be, would be deciding that. Pretty desperate for somebody.
If you can see. The chair in the back.
It's been quite a while. I've been at least six weeks. I cleaned over it all together.
On your lead lower. That's kind of hard. I don't want to discriminate against somebody with limitations in any way. I don't hate you, but.
No, you don't. So it's pretty clear with both of them now that it was so beautiful. Someone else was.
I mean. I'm being fine. I'm following plenty of experience and I'll probably write next door. So and he has usually dragged him over. No one who can do that. But you know what I mean? It's hard to beat somebody that's right next door.
Well. Is he old enough to have 50 years of experience?
Is he in his twenties then?
Unless I missed, maybe he said he was 20 at Copeland, 20 to give him.
I put him in his fifties.
Say that's what he is, you know?
No, but I'm curious about this, this person for mental health. Did it say who the trainer is by any chance?
No, the trainer did come with me. It was a death on the, with him. It was a death on the.
Oh, just be curious who it is. I don't know.
It doesn't say.
He's next door, next to Michael Driscoll, I guess. Yeah, I've only met the little boy.
Believe it. So we have a motion or a
I have a motion that we hired.
Robert?
Yes.
We have a second?
I'll say.
Okay, first and second. Do they have any further discussion?
Is there a salary set?
Whatever personally is the salary.
Like 19, 20, 25?
I actually, well, I actually, when I advertised it, I didn't advertise just for the board to know. I cut the hours of work in case someone refused to work for less than $20 or $25 an hour. Cause we, Belinda and I between us asked a ton of people and no one would even touch it.
I told them they can be 30, 40.
All is shot.
So I thought the only way that it would meet the budget was to cut the hours and make to get more money. But neither one of them complained about the rate.
She was talking four hours.
Well, no, she was doing like six, seven hours. I cut it down to five. It's the garage, the town hall and the town hall.
Let me take a good six.
Okay, we have a verb to revoke the first and second. We can vote.
For it in a second.
All those in favor?
I am.
opposed, so carry it. So Krista.
Krista.
Uh, Krista, yeah. We did already vote on your letter. We were very concerned that you still have a bad balance with us with the transfer station of $641 from our last agreement time. That nothing.
No, there was, there was an issue. I brought money and was denied that taking us.
Only for taxes, not for transfer station.
It was for roll.
And so you've been getting a bill every month for your '22, '23 taxes and your '23, '24.
Apparently I was reading them wrong because I, I never got anything. I applied for the for the bad taxes for last year. I never got anything back second that didn't get paid. So the letter that I was getting, I obviously was reading incorrectly.
You were reading one with.
I thought they were just for the taxes that were given for this year.
Well, it was two months, two years.
You even got one until after the November payment for the this year. So before that, the year before was being sent.
So the board denied their request. Just from bad experience. Hey, you're up now for the traffic calming one.
Hey, everyone. So if you'll recall, we worked with you, the town, to secure $195,000 grant from RORC to put trails on the pending community forest as well as a trail through the school property down to the rec area, rec fields. And we had planned a bridge across the Elmore Branch down at the end of the trail off of Flatiron Road. And that section of Flatiron Road completely washed out during the July floods. So we, Sinuosity and the town agreed that we should rethink our plans about that bridge for long-term usability. So let me, if I can share. Oh, can you? It's disabled screen sharing? Okay. So here is the original plan, which has the kind of trail going down a bit east from School Street and then the Brant or the Elmore Branch Bridge. And the new plan is to kind of go further to the west on the trail. We'll need a little boardwalk across a ditch there. And then kids will cross Flatiron Road and then go on School Street across the bridge that exists and did not get harmed in any way by the flooding. And then a little further up, there'll be, need to be a small footbridge over a wet area to get to the rec fields. And then kind of this area of School Street is proposed a couple of traffic calming measures because folks drive pretty fast on that section. And it's proposed to have two signs which basically say caution, slow down pedestrian traffic. Or there's another one that just says, slow down pedestrians ahead. And then also an additional speed limit sign approaching from the south. Sinuosity met with Dylan. Um, Sinuosity met with Dylan, the town road foreman, and also proposed, um, some potential. Uh, speed bumps, and he would like to kind of monitor traffic after this trail is constructed and after kids are using this. Um, and then decide if speed bumps do really need to be installed, if folks are ignoring, um, the signs and the, and the kids and the speed limit. Um, so. The small bridge or the small boardwalk across the ditch is in a floodplain area. Um, so I know Sinuosity has been working with Tom Martin on, um, the potential need for a zoning permit, but we wanted to just kind of. Check with the select board on, um, this general plan, uh, so we can finalize permits and move forward, um, with this. Are there any questions?
So it's not in a wetland, a state wetlands area?
Uh, yeah, there aren't any mapped wetlands in that area, but we are working with, um, the wetland permit office to see if there's any need to, um. Get a extra wetland permit around the area that, um, the small bridge over the, the kind of drainage on the, um, the rec fields.
We said, where is the drainage coming from? I don't know. But, um, you're.
It's coming from.
On the Kearney's Road? Okay, I'm curious. So how's the board feel? Do you have any objections to them moving forward with this plan? It matters with Dylan. So the board seems to be in agreement to move forward.
As a safety. As a safety feature, Kate, would it be advisable to put sort of a mesh? Fence on that one side where the children will be crossing, so they don't be falling in hopefully?
Um, it's a, it's a three-foot wide boardwalk. I don't think there's much danger of falling in. Well, I can ask Sinuosity what they think, but.
The guard rail's about eighteen inches high, that's why.
Um, wait, oh, you mean on the, the bridge across School Street?
The bridge. By the, uh, Flatiron Road. Highway Bridge.
I'm sorry, I can't quite hear you.
Town Highway Bridge, uh, are the guard, are there guard rails on there?
There's a guard rail, but it's only eighteen inches off from the bed.
Is that legal?
I, I'm sorry, I don't really understand the question.
It's something we need to figure out internally.
Okay.
And we will. And I put that in charge of you to talk to Dylan and find out if the guardrails are legal size. Okay, thank you, Kate. We are in agreement with your plan.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Press report.
So there's two things. Well, it's a lot of things, but. So you, I sat in front of you, uh, and also sent to you, uh, two financial, uh. Reports, one from the town and one from the transfer station for next meeting to talk about fund balance. But I'll be honest, I don't think there is any. There's only a couple of departments that are under the budget, so I don't, I don't think there's any anyway. But I would like you guys to look it over. The bills for June have been paid. The only one not in there is the. One that you'll be deciding tonight about our funds are not for paving. We didn't pay that yet, because the decision hasn't been made yet. So the other thing is the loan coming up, um, we'll be paying out for three hundred, about to go alone. That we got from last year for tax anticipation. Be honest, it pretty much went for the flood. And so we've been skating along, using some capital funds, which we will pay back. Um, as soon as we start getting some funds from FEMA, which would be nice. Um, in the meantime, for next year, the tax anticipation. We usually go through Union Bay, and they give us two options, and as you can see. Rates are a little bit higher than they were last year. There are two different options. Option one, four hundred thousand is what the cash management, um. Confused that we would probably need to stay, you know, above water. To get us through until we get our tax money in November and January. July is usually the hardest one for us, because we're paying off one and borrowing another, so we have to use that money. Um, the four hundred thousand, it's a tax anticipation loan with reinvestment option. That is what we have right now. It's called the cash management system. So we take it as we, we get the whole amount. We put it in a fund that gains interest. And then we, um, take it out as we need it, and then we get less interest and we pay on the whole four hundred thousand, because we've taken it. But as you can see down below. Um, it basically comes out that, um. We don't pay a significant amount of interest over what we make. We can tell you last month, we made over twenty-five hundred on our cash management. Because we had all this school money in there before I paid it out. So it does balance out, um. I'd like to say we don't pay more than a thousand, but it's more like, um, between two thousand and twenty-five hundred. So the second option is to just. Take the loan, it's non-revolving. And then, um, it's due at maturity. We don't get any interest and. It would be, um. Option one, we would pay approximately ten thousand, and option two, we would have to pay an interest of twenty-seven ninety-nine. Which is a little bit more than the two thousand that we pay now. So it's whatever you guys decide to do. I can make a recognition that I like the cash management. Part, because then I can also put the tax money I receive in there and even gain more interest. It's, uh, it's very flexible. Um, Union Bay is very easy to deal with and do not let the interest rates. But, um, as you can see, the non-revolving loan one is much higher, five point seven five. The four point seven is, is nice. You know, I have to be honest, that's about what the average is right now. I've not put this out to bid, because usually it's easier to have it in-house. Because I just move from one account to another online. I don't have any checks I have to do, nothing like that. It's more convenient, less, um, to, to the bank. The only reason I go to the bank now is when I open accounts and when I, um, have cash, which is every week with the transfer station. One note on the transfer station is, if you look at the income. We are doing spectacular. I, I have to be honest, I don't really know what the key is. As again, it might be basal, but I don't want to get, say that. But in the last three weekends, he's done over twenty-two hundred dollars. And usually around this time last year, we were only doing between seventeen and eighteen. I looked it up.
So this is the bank.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So you are recommending that we select option one with cash management?
If he, yes.
That we've done in the past.
And the last, uh, even when you, Linda was telling us, we would choose that one. So I would say in the last five years. It runs the town a little interest, so it's not so.
Yeah, it almost seems like no, it's all I've ever taken motion to move forward with what we've done before. Option one.
The second.
I'll second that, Martin.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carry on. So you've gone with one. Now, sorry to interrupt you, but.
Oh, no, that's okay. So, um, we, all of these have to be signed, you know, the bank elements. And they asked if I wanted to go with Doc's sign, but I, I, Kurt doesn't have, you know, so I thought it'd be better if we did it this way. It's the resolution, it's the, um, the note, it's all the information.
While we're signing this. I was just really curious. About highway department supplies. Okay, we spend over nine thousand, it was projected at twenty-five.
I know.
And why? Have prices gone up or they buying a lot more than they should?
Well, I think it's because, this is my opinion, we used to put oil and grease. And the air, the cylinder.
It's gone with me. It never happened.
I know, but for some reason, he puts it all in supplies now, and it seems to.
Don't go, isn't, that's where it belongs. But, no, I don't think it's that.
Well, I think it's a detailed, um, uh, printout of it.
I would like a detailed printout of that and, um, maybe two years ago. So I liked it, what I was thinking about, like, have the, no, that wouldn't be a supply. But what is causing such, uh, huge increases and stuff because? Things cost more and we're not keeping up with inflation, or are they buying more than should?
Oil almost doubled.
Yeah, I want, I just want to see that, and, uh, then, uh, then, um, I understand, you know?
Okay.
That's all.
I mean, more oil went from basically sixteen, seventeen dollars to thirty. Five quarts.
So that will tell us when we draw a budget for next year that we are totally not. Putting enough money in that category.
Could any of the stuff that they had to replace in flood, could that have been miscategorized?
I should all about that too. I can check that, yeah. He might have put supplies and I just didn't catch it yet, because he codes the general stuff. I, I, that's a good idea.
I'm sure you know the line.
Yeah, I understand they're not going to grow any more sand, because, um. They have a lot, and then, so the sixteen thousand that they're under, is he just going to leave it there to help absorb some of the cost of being over in other areas?
We can go over this with our questions in our next meeting. Do you want to point anything else out to us?
Um, I think. We look at the town building funds. See, we, we need to, uh, maybe take a look at that and see if we. Have. We need to cut some, some hours for people in the new year, or we have to. Realistically look at, um, the projects. Because I felt that that one is one that, I mean, maybe the.
Four hundred.
Yeah.
Would give me, well, uh, it's about sixteen thousand.
And I have ten sitting in the fund balance, but if I move that over, we're still over six. And we still have two paychecks to go and, and maybe some more things to happen.
So I just want to know, is, so all the mileage for the. Building maintenance person goes into that category, six, oh, six.
I can have it broken out if you'd like.
So I have spoken to him about. The fact that he has gone over, um. He was, when we hired him, um, giving twenty hours, and he seems to want to stick with that, even if I got. Whittle it down, but then I said, well, then your problem is your mileage is, um, really adding into it, and we'll have to look at that.
Now, the town branch major repair projects were the ones that. The roof.
The roof, the lighting, the guard rail, uh, not the guardrails, the gutters.
Yes, all that, um, um, had to, you know, the fixtures and stuff, like, we had site above, um, come in, you know, which was okay, but the select board and stuff. But what I'm saying is, um. Those were the only major repairs we had. The rest were just general repairs. But one of the things I will point out is transfer station, the supplies and stuff did get put on the transfer station, but not his time. So that is why, um, in the town, um, it has garbage disposal. We have a two-hundred and a three-hundred, one for the town office and one for the, um. Town, uh, town hall. I'm proposing we do not pay that, because his time came out of the town when he was taking garbage up to the transfer station. And even though it's a, it's a handyman thing. Town paid it, so why would we pay the transfer station again? You know what I'm saying? I don't know.
Just for the, for, for the cost for the dumping.
Yes.
Because we have to pay to get rid of them, and it's not just drivers.
No, what they want to pay is, essentially, we want to pay his labor twice.
Right, right.
Yeah. And the other thing under ordinance committee, the green up, uh, spring and fall. The transfer station was able to absorb that. So I have not moved any money over to the transfer station. It was only tires, I will say, probably was around five hundred, garbage was around six, so that's only eleven hundred. And in here, we had twenty-three hundred dollars. And the transfer station is doing better than the town's, let's be honest. So. If it can absorb green up, maybe that it should, you know what I'm saying, transfer station, because it's for the people.
Moving it forward, we have the handyman code his time. Independent, separate.
That's what I asked him on his new, I thought. He said he would try. No, he will, he will, okay, he will. He's like, well, it's only a half an hour here, a half an hour. I said, those half an hours add up.
Yep.
I'm a little hesitant, um, to start, and we, we keep doing this, you know, when I was in the legislature. But, you know, the transfer station money belongs to the transfer station. If we have a surplus, we should put it in some kind of. A special fund, because maybe someday we'd like electricity up there, or we'd like to own our own robots. Instead of, um. You know, so we shouldn't be giving away all of that money. We have never been able to do anything.
So I think you could do a fun balance on that, on the transfer station, if you wanted to move over a certain amount, and I could put it in a special account, can't be touched.
Well, it's an enterprise fund, so it can't go away. I mean, it only belongs to them. It can roll over.
Yes.
Where the town can.
Okay, I see what you're saying, but do you want it to have a better interest bearing?
Well, I thought it might when we start getting the bill enough.
Because at this point, we only made nineteen dollars this last year on interest, so it's very low.
Right. But it wouldn't hurt, you know, if the board agreed to, you know, put five thousand away and then give some more, some more, um. Save up for those rainy days when.
Now, the two things that have to be done at the transfer station, which could come out of the transfer station money.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
We're going to do that, um, in our updates. It's a period.
Okay.
So one more thing about the transfer station. Just wondering if I'm understanding, your first page, your line sixty-eighty. Uh, our rental fee is more than half of what we budgeted. Is it because we haven't made, this doesn't reflect a recent payment? Is it because we haven't made, this doesn't reflect a recent payment?
No, this is it, but this is the thing is, um, we paid the bills for June. We got rid of the dumpster.
Okay.
And I'm not having him, um, well, no, he's still renting three, so that, but I'm also not having him come as off date. And as you can see here, um, we're still below our budget for June and we've paid the bill.
Yeah, I just was curious, the rental fee being half, a little more than half.
I think he's only charging us fifty dollars, I think we used to be a hundred. So it's always, it was always a hundred fifty. It was two hundred when we had, and then for green up, we didn't get an extra one this year. So we didn't have that.
Again, the thousand dollars makes a huge difference, but just curious where the
Yeah.
why the budget difference is, is twice.
Well, we didn't have that extra rent. For the cardboard. You got rid of that in the red.
And as you should see, you're still left with, um, payroll and we have two more payroll, and I think we'll still be.
Okay, project managers, to record.
Was that me?
That's you.
Thank you, Bert.
Okay, sorry, the, the audio is a little rough this evening for some reason, it might be the fans in the background. Um, so for FEMA, um, FEMA marches on at, uh, at the pace that FEMA is gonna march on. I can tell you that the, um, uh, all of our projects have been, uh, completed from our end. Um, I just did a big run on them today. Um, we're now starting to get feedback from the next level at FEMA. Um, and this is the group called CRC, they're the review, first first step in review. And, um, they're going to come back with questions, um, here and there as they go through each project. Um, one of the questions that I have been asking, and I think I got a pretty, a pretty good answer, a pretty realistic answer about when we're gonna start to see funds come into the town. Um, and, uh, that does not start to occur until every project is what they call obligated. Um, once it's obligated, then the money goes to the state. Um, at which time the state will write a grant and then the money will be coming to, to the town. Best guess from, uh, from both FEMA and, uh, uh, the experience of others is that that'll start to happen around Labor Day. Um, so we're gonna spend the summer before we really see any dollars come through from FEMA. Um, there is one that has been obligated already. These will be paid, by the way, as they're obligated, so they don't wait for all projects to be obligated. Um, the first project that was obligated is, um, pretty small value, it's forty-five hundred dollars. Uh, this was a mitigation project, so we could raise the compressor at the fire department. Uh, but, uh, the state will start to see that forty-five hundred dollars start to come through. Um, I don't know if the state will write a separate grant on that and then give it to the town or if the state waits for, um, a much larger amount to come through. Um, right now, it's looking like the, um, assuming all things are obligated, uh, about two million dollars, um, coming from FEMA. Um, and, uh, at, all of those numbers start, are starting to look now to be pretty solid. Um, so I'm comfortable with the two million, um, it's just a matter of time. Uh, the amount of administration that, um, is, is going, is gonna be going ongoing, um, is gonna start to slow down because these have gone to CRC and then it's just random questions rather than the really extensive research that they required from, uh, from phase one. One other, um, item has occurred this week and that is it looks like there may be, um, a resurgence in the possibility of getting, um, FEMA to pay for the interest on the loans that, that, that the town is taking. Um, our last report was that that was being discussed, um, internally at FEMA. They had not, uh, committed to that program, but, um, I think I sent to Linda and Belinda, um, their latest, it was a little confusing, uh, but, um, they'll pay interest once a project is obligated. Um, but they will not pay interest while we're waiting for it to become obligated, is, is the way that I read it. Um, and that doesn't look like a full commitment, I, I wouldn't hold your breath on that one until we get more clarification. Um, and then the other, uh, project is with, um, federal highway. As you know, quite some time ago, we, uh, put in for a grant for the, um, Pond Road and for North Wilkut, um, at, uh, four-wheel drive. And, uh, the process is continuing to go on, they asked for some further information, um, which we have supplied. The last piece of information that they're, um, asking for is photographs of both sites, um, as they stand now after the work has been done. Um, so I'm kinda one-legged right now, so if anybody, um, uh, could help me out, if you're in those areas and could take a photo and send it to me of the, um, of the slide, uh, four-wheel drive and the bridge at, um, at the Pond Road. Or not, we can send Deb out, I guess, we could do it that way.
The bridge.
What's that?
Inside of the bridge.
Uh, it's on the, uh, that would be on, well, going towards Elmore, it's gonna be the left-hand side of the bridge. On the, on the far side, yeah.
I'll do it.
Okay, yeah, that's great, cause I think you know where to look at, you know where to look, which is wonderful. Okay, and, uh, that's all I got, so, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you remember when we took that roll-off on the transfer station for the cardboard? How long ago we got rid of that, just kidding?
Well, that we, the, the roll-off for cardboard came on during COVID.
Right.
Because of, had COVID, because that's, the boxes were piling up as a result of COVID.
Right.
Um, and I think we took it off just shortly after the governor started to ease up on, on COVID restrictions. Does that sound right to you?
About two years ago.
Yeah.
I can check minutes of the.
It's not that important, we were just talking about why was the rental fees much lower, much lower.
Yeah, that roll-off made a, that roll-off was expensive to maintain. Plus, we were taking the cardboard at no cost.
Okay.
I think that's where we lost.
Okay, thank you, Bert.
Thank you.
I don't think the, the solid waste if they ever got their contract going, did they?
In store they do, but it's.
Finally.
Yeah, they, they won't take any color.
It doesn't have to be coordinated.
It does, so it just wouldn't work for us.
Cause the Amazons.
If it has any print on it, they won't take it.
Ripple in the roll, ripple in cardboard. Okay, we'll move on to the select board review action. Community trust concept of the schoolhouse. Um, we briefly talked about this last week when we had the presentation, um, on the Brown points, that the committee was exploring this concept. So they have applied to the, um, Preservation Trust of Vermont, um, for the grant for technical assistance to help, um, community member, uh, committee members, um, get up to speed or have help with creating a community trust. Uh, they created a community trust in, uh, for the Elmore store and the Albany store, I know in close, and Peachamass one. So it's a nonprofit organization, stands alone, it doesn't have to be with one rebuilding. Um, it's a trust that, that would hold multiple buildings in it. Anyway, they're looking at that concept and hoping to, um, get that grant, I met with, uh, still with the lady who was reviewing our grant to find out more information on that, um. But one of the things was that it would have to be a letter from the select board supporting that concept. And the reason why I like it is because I've heard a lot of people say, yes, I wanna cafe or when are you gonna do something with the schoolhouse, but I don't wanna spend taxpayer money on. So when you create a community trust, it would, um, they would be involved in raising the funds, the funds wouldn't come out of, of the taxpayers unless they ask for a donation or something, but it would be a lot like a business, their own federal ID number and everything, so just wondering what, um, the board felt in terms of that concept and it would mean at some point, um, I don't know, if you would lease the building to the trust, if one was created or give the building to the trust. Um, you can't have both, I mean, if they're gonna do a trust, the select board would kinda be, or the town would kinda be out of it sometimes.
Or would the town still own the property? You lease it.
You'd, so like the Hyde Park Opera House, the town of Hyde Park owns that.
Yeah.
But they have given them a hundred-year lease. They do all the maintenance and everything, but they don't own it, you know, while, um, like this doesn't own.
Community trust is like a good idea, right?
Um, you know, I'm, I don't know, um, not having gone through the trust, um, whether you, what you have to do when you lease it or what, um.
It's pretty heavy, the town doesn't own it. The building or anything.
I mean, I mean, how Sterling actually owns the building, but the town leases it.
Well, yeah, and it's like a trust, yeah.
I don't have all the answers right now, but I just needed to uh, bring it to your attention and so you can think about it, um. They're reviewing the application, I think they might come around again, um, and actually look at the project, I don't think they'll tell them till August whether we get it. Uh, they're gonna rattle it down to like nine projects that apply and then eventually to five or seven. But with, um, technical help of creating a community trust, it's also, um, a large, large donation towards the renovation, what, twenty-five percent of what the renovation is, or something like that. So with creating a, uh, trust, you have to create a nonprofit, you need bylaws, you need a board of directors, you need articles of incorporation, there's a lot of work that needs to be done and I think our present committee needs, needs that technical help.
Yeah, but without, without the nonprofit thing, the, the community trust, I don't see any way that that gets off the ground. I don't see how the town can take that on in any of that without. I just, I'm skeptical.
I think this is the best, I mean, I mean, I think if there were a few more really dedicated people, it could, but we did with the wastewater.
But six years.
But, um, you know, but I thi- I think, I think this is the best option for taxpayer.
You like the motion?
If you're ready, I mean.
I'm ready because of the benefits of the structure, to, like, say, to get it actually done.
You guys play it, I mean, you have a lot.
Right, the committee would still need, uh, months of working on it before it became that, um. But no sense in them starting working on it if the board is not in favor of going this route.
I'll make a motion that we go this route. For the, uh, community trust, but. When we lease it to them, yeah.
You have a second?
I'll say.
We have any further discussions? All those in favor?
All right.
Hosts, so carry. So the big one, you know, we'll come back to the board if there's any really legal, um, decisions to make, but at this point, we still own it, but they can move forward with creating this, doing this work.
It'd be really nice to see that at least, uh, you know, have a cafe or whatever else, put in here, it'd be really nice, you know, anything.
The donuts.
Yeah, mine.
So appointment Development Review Board and Planning Commission. I've had two responses. I have, um, Dylan, is interested in serving on the Development Review Board. And, um, Bradley Dorisman is interested in serving on the planning. It was the board's pleasure.
If crazy enough to do it. Yeah, I think my voice can get a bit, yeah. Yes.
So they'll leave me on this one board, not both. You have a second?
We have a second.
Those in favor?
All right.
Hosts, so carry. Great, um, conservation easement, Tamrec Bro. I'm like, not to that. Yeah, it's me. Figure out, uh, what was the report? Hi, and you're welcome to come to on June twentieth at three-thirty to, uh, walk the land with, um, it's on the news, June twentieth, three-thirty, the Bear Swamp, to walk the, um, this property with, um, Kate Garvey, who sits on the Northern Rivers Land Trust, also Wilkut resident. She wanted to look at that. The only problem I see with this is, um, existing survey of the property, but, okay, so we have a survey of the property below them. Uh, if you could look and see, it was cut off, um. Remember this property is that nine acres and at the time was kinda illegal.
Oh, yes, okay.
It'd be great to find out if there was a survey on file. I would hate to have to do one.
Yeah, or, there must have been one, because St. George, I'll look under that.
Yeah, but it was, the survey was. Yeah, but it was the survey was from the people before them.
Okay. Who was, I'll look it up, I'll look it up.
But all the other stuff um is straightforward.
Do you bring the box over?
The one that's right, I'll wear a long sleeve.
Don't matter.
I'm not throwing you in the swamp.
You gotta wear a net. You know, put a hat on, put a net.
People like, but I don't.
Not going in the swamp.
So we'll bring that back up um. Once we walk the land and you see it was a survey and the board, you see where they want to move forward with that. The Royal County Sheriff's contract, I emailed that out. It is the same as usual.
Yeah, I didn't notice any different wording. Pretty boilerplate.
I haven't really read that, does anyone? So um. Does the board want to review this before they approve it? I mean, the money's approved, but.
Do you want to make any changes?
Alright, so we will uh. I mean, after our next meeting. The board will review. The writing others. It starts July first, so we have to do it on this. So do you need a copy card?
This is kind of isolated, but Steve Prince's son is going to the Lease Academy this fall. Be nice if he joined the sheriff's department, work for us, isn't that good? Sheriff in town or deputy in town, if you say.
And maybe they wouldn't drive so fast, so fifteen, kill a deer and, you know.
I know.
It's like the speed limit's thirty-five, I'm definitely put my own sign out.
It's thirty-five, can you?
You don't have any. The people across the road, they're walking now, so there's two. Maybe, I talked to them tonight, maybe.
So we have the community foundation donation which we received April twenty-second that we. Only are allowed to use while we're supposed to use it for. Uh. Support community recovery from flood damage to the. Moil Valley Rail Trail and remote use of the rail trail. For the community's economic development, this may include. Flood cleanup projects, landscaping, rebuilding, events of other activities. So we haven't made a decision on it, that two thousand dollars, that's all we can use it for. The only thing I could come up with was um added trail signage. You know, we don't really have any. Trail signage, didn't you come up with some ideas, Deb, for trail signage?
Yes.
Yeah.
I started making uh some signs. And um.
In two thousand and three, there's two hundred.
Yeah.
And um trail signage and the um. What about, there was talk about river cleanup. With uh. Is Andy doing any river cleanup?
Andy, yeah, I haven't confirmed with him, um. I could email and see if he did a Cinco de Mayo scouting trip with his kayak group. And if they plan to clean up later. But there was another uh was an individual or organization uh who wanted to do river cleanup as well.
Well, there was um. Peter Danforth with the Memorial County Conservation District. Talked about doing something in the fall, I don't know.
I don't know, Long Island River, they cleaned up that a lot. Did you see them up there?
And somebody cleaned uh from Hardwick to Fisher Bridge, I think.
Yes.
I can't remember who, but you know, I was thinking we could use it for some. Falling cost from Fisher Bridge down here, but I can't remember who. Who did that, I mean, Jim Ryan was working with the River Pedders, but they did the rail trail.
Yeah.
They did the rivers.
And I don't know where they took their um garbage. Did it go to a transfer station? I have no idea.
Did you come up with anything else?
For your signage, Deb, what did you come up with for signage?
Well. I wanted something extremely cute, uh because that's kind of what other uh towns were doing along their rail trail. You know, in Morrisville and Johnson, and so uh we had taken down the gate, for example, from Depot Park. And so I was taking those uh, you know, the pickets. And then, you know, I, you know, words pointed at the top, you know, so that I had painted on there, you know, like. Hardwick that way, Morrisville that way, and welcome, you know, this is Wilken. And we have Depot Park, Sebo Y five, and those sorts of informational things so that. When people are on the rail trail, you know, right at that junction, you know, if uh. I don't know, if they don't notice the fortifying or something, you know, they may not even realize uh when it's full foliage, that they're in Wilken. Uh and so um I had talked to Bob about uh getting the. You know, getting the signs on the post, uh you know, those. Pickets are not real thick. And I was concerned that, you know, if you drill too big a hole in there, they might just uh not last. And um so that's kind of as far as it got. To, you know, get them on post.
The uh question I had was. We've noticed it walking with the dog or just walking, bicycles. Some of them are very inconsiderate, they'll almost run you over. And then scream at me, why were you in the way? Baseball bat. He's uh, I don't want to be on a seventy-year-old person.
Well, I don't get a score, Gil, it's not a seventy-year-old, it's like thirty-five old.
I don't, I mean, it could be something, it's, you know, like, be kind of.
Yeah, I think those seem to be.
Well, there's nothing we can do on railroad property, it has to be an appropriate.
Right, but you're not leasing.
We can do, be kind of, yeah. Yeah, that little.
I mean, you could do it on the other side, you know, we could do it here, do it over by the. By the apartment.
I'm sure Pat and the government will advertise Jack's.
Oh, that's nice, they have a nice one like that with the water.
Don't let it.
For the more on.
Right, dog, it's really, some adults run you over and scream at you.
I'm trying to get them in line.
Okay. Last generation is pepper spray the woods, well, dogs are too. Well, type of guns, oh, I'm sorry, I hear that.
Yeah.
She's a big chicken.
It's scary, I'm almost today.
We call them chickens, chickens.
And what the words are, you use lots.
I'd just like to do this one in five minutes. Just bringing it, bringing it back, even if you're running, so it's. It's not like. So.
I have a request from uh Geronimo Sanchez, is that a real person?
It's a real guy, I talked on the phone, that's his name, that's what he told me.
He wants the wood on the ball field, what kind of wood?
Driftwood.
Driftwood, yes.
You saw that driftwood?
It is a nerd.
I did, and I didn't know which ball field, he said it will be ball field, and I kept saying, well, which ball field?
That's probably the focus, north will.
North will come, we're going to have a project.
No one can drop it, I think.
I didn't know ball field, please, because I thought maybe there's a driftwood down here, but I don't know.
Good.
So if it's the north, sure, you know, I'll call them.
Well, you can't touch it.
Because we're starting the um project.
Yeah, the plug.
And then um. Send me down there, I guess, you know.
Okay.
Um town event. On September sixth, it's the Friday after Labor Day, it seems to work best.
It's August, it's raining, doesn't it?
Well, we need somebody else to be in charge, I've been in charge of this for a lot, last three months.
You're right.
Yeah, I'll let you call. I don't recommend today, do you need the data for that one?
Okay.
But tomorrow.
Alan, you and your sister.
I have all the paperwork and everything, I have all the, it's all worked out, you know, what you have to do. Um I'm gonna advertise it then because I. I I don't want to be in charge, I'll be a semi in charge.
I wonder who's down on the community garden, uh she is very event oriented. And I wondered if she would be amenable to, you know, taking that on with some. Guidance, I, you know, on on where to go, but to, you know, make sure all the things happen.
You, um can you leave us the contact number for some army that helps set up city?
Yeah, the army really bombed out of us.
Uh I need to turn this, you know.
Yeah, everybody, I think, everybody got trained.
So, but yeah, I will check on that.
If the army helps set up tents, I don't wish it would turn.
Oh.
She's gonna be sixty.
I'll check with Glenn. Okay, select board assistant, um. Lot going on, I don't know, I've. Been coffee for all of you, I've done a draft ads, it's a paper. I've gone through this thing here, I'm not sure, table. Of. My taste of what I liked and didn't like and. Um and I wanted people to quickly go through it and so I can write it up. Uh let's start with this ad that I'll put out. Um. We need to get this done. So let's, I I think the best way to do is go paragraph by paragraph, and you you don't add something or something, we don't want too much because it's going in the paper, but. Um. Um it's, the town of Wilken seeks a dynamic team-oriented individual to work in close coordination with the select board. And other town employees, the administration of the select board and highway department. Priorities, this position will have various responsibilities in the area of. Administration, financial, highway, and public relations. What we're looking for is, and this is where I need to, um. A degree in appropriate discipline or an equivalent experience preferred. So it's not saying you have to have a degree, but preferred, um. Experience in local government planning and administration or an equivalent experience in business of the government. Grant writing, grant administration, and grant management experience strongly preferred. Knowledge of municipal operations. Environmental relations and Vermont municipal law. Management experience in office environment preferred. Efficient in Excel and Microsoft Office and adaptable to new office technologies. Do you think this covers it, the bullets, or do you think it's too hard? Um too much? Most of our grant writing at this point is uh. Usually done by the Royal County Planning Commission, but we do need grant writing for other areas now and then, um. The highway department.
I think that pretty much covers it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just trying to think of anything that we can try, you know, but there's really.
It's just in a, I think again, it's in the details for the job description.
Yeah.
So we need to figure out, um this is a part-time hourly position, we we are. Sighing that, didn't we?
Just based on the the budget.
But we need to figure out the hours.
Permit you to plan that twenty isn't enough.
No, um I think we hired him for twenty-three and a half. Because once it goes to twenty-four, you have to have retirement. But we do want this person to have retirement because. We want the person to, so it has to be over twenty-four, I think we talked about thirty-two when you start.
Yeah. Now, with based on the the budget item, we have, what, sixty thousand dollars?
We have sixty thousand dollars. With the, so we would have to pay retirement and FICA and. If if they, and so the personnel policy says for insurance. If it's single, one person is eight percent of the policy premium. If it's two persons, it's. Twenty percent, and if it's family, they have to pay twenty-five percent of insurance.
But the insurance premium for family is nineteen hundred seventy-eight dollars or something, I think it's going up to twenty-two in July.
So be more than that. The topic, only two percent of it's two thousand each year.
No, I think the quote was twenty-two hundred per family.
It's going for us.
So they.
And we also have um a high deductible. And so far, if it's one person, then they get twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars towards that deductible, they pay two fifty. But if it's families, five grand, we pay forty-five hundred, they pay five. Two person to family, it's the same.
I think we may want to leave it at thirty dollars, just to help cover some cost. It'll be in my office, thirty-nine thousand.
Everything else look alright? Let's hopefully go through this um. Well, I didn't choose the name, but I've used the project manager's journal description for the script, um assistant. I've taken everything out of the transfer station as, um, responsibility. As Belinda's doing it now, it's good, but I wanted to put that in there that they needed to oversee, um, the permits. So we have a NFL certification for the transfer station, which will be coming up for renewal.
Two thousand twenty-five.
Right, um, which will need to be completed and overseen. And they should be really familiar with, um, yeah, because the certification says how many tires we can take in a year, how much garbage we're allowed to take. Familiar. And also we have a, um, I forget what it's called. It's not a conditional. So we have something on the land bill.
It's a compliance report we have to do and everything. Do you have a, a, a visit?
We don't have to, this, we don't have to, um, monitor the wells.
No.
They, they should have s- some contact, but the day-to-day, um, management of life, I think that's working okay. How about seeing about the brush hog? Should that be through you with the manager?
Well, it depends upon if we're going to use the same people or if we're going to, uh, did we make it part of the MOLI contract?
I believe so.
Okay. Well, there was sort of a problem that Bob got because two of the pipes were knocked over. So maybe yes, this person should oversee it. And the MOLI, please.
Let's move on. Road project management, um, it seemed good, um, do you need anything to add or subtract?
In the ocean of lights, we will shoot them in. Making sure the guys are wearing his vest and things like that. That's, and anything in thought that needs to be taken care of, the hiring guide. As far as noticing things and talking Dylan about it, but if we're gonna make it part of the job description, I really do believe that it shouldn't fall on the form.
Can you see him want to make sure that they're, making sure that they're understanding each other?
Doesn't the union steward have to do that stuff? Do you know?
That was just, uh,
safety.
It would be on him to bring it up to the union. My, my thought on it would be up to the steward to bring it up to the union, should there be a problem. For example, we're asking somebody into a ditch that requires a trench box and we don't supply a trench box. The union steward should go, hey, we're not doing this. And get, you know, involved. But as far as making sure that the MSDX sheets, cargo chemicals in that building are in a place that are easily accessible so that you can figure out what you gotta do when you break, really break the affair office. That's not really a steward thing. I mean, I guess he could make an issue if he chose to, but.
He's got a binders, didn't he say?
Yeah. I just, I kept the binders, but I don't know. But, but really. And, and should one of them be like a safety officer?
I would see it be better, but they should probably also take care of making sure their own fire extinguishers are have been checked monthly.
Well, we have.
Anyway, anyway, they should, they should also make sure they're up to date. Any guy washes are up to date. Just like any basic manufacturing, it's kind of like you gotta have someone that does that.
Well, and there's, there's all kinds of V O T standards on those trucks. They should be making sure that that's all done as well. But again, I'm not sure. You know, we're getting into the weeds a little bit with the highway thing, actually, as far as the select board assistant. You know, sure, making sure that we're, you know, verifying compliance.
We've got all sorts of safety guards, wind rails, so forth and so on. It's very debrable.
So I'm writing it down, but, um, we won't make it part of the assistance job. We should probably that someone sit down and do a job of deeper job descriptions.
Yes, and as far as making somebody out of a safety officer, I would be all for putting one or more of them through an O for thirty class. And checking their flagging certifications to make sure that everybody's.
Oh, they don't have many.
No.
Yeah, they, they, they.
They don't have many.
I tried to, uh, schedule a class and I just got no call back.
But they should be scheduled.
I know.
There's actually, yeah, there's an online one actually for the flagging of all things they could take.
Yeah, I only, I believe I got my flagging cert online when I had one of them.
Write right up over here and set them up with computers.
Are you gonna read it for them too?
No.
They can pass the test at the end of it.
Uh, again, a side note here, but I really do think that's pretty important. They have the flagging and thus in terms of liability, should there be an incident on the road.
They know.
They know.
They should have, but it's not their insurance that's gonna save the cars.
They had Bob flagging the last time. I was like, no.
You didn't have signs. You picked up signs. Last, last zone of there as I drove through, everything looked good. Everything looked like you would expect it to.
It's not, it's not a tree company with their half-assed flagging set up for or the telecom company with the one guy with the flag and nothing else sitting out there in the dark. You can't see them.
But the three of them should have the business card to say that they're allowed.
Yeah.
I'm, I think they also see would be really impressed with us if we.
Yeah.
One more note on safety. When Bob is out doing, Bob and whomever we find for him to do the nine-one-one signs, they also should be wearing nightgloves.
Okay, I've got lots of them in the transfer station that nobody.
Well, we gave them one. Do you know the person to wear?
We did, we did.
Yeah, we wouldn't wear it, but I also, um, had at home, I have one of those amber lights. I thought, so I gave it to Bob so he can, uh, make himself noticeable and look municipal.
Put at least that, that and have the vest on to make sure, hey, no one can see you.
Yeah.
You're gonna be out beside a road or even walk near the road doing shit. People go, hey, you wanna at least have that vest. They can see you.
Yeah, well, and again, it's an insurance thing. If he doesn't wanna wear the vest, that's fine, but he's gonna have to find something else to do with his N L league, in my opinion. Yeah, because again, if he gets hit and he comes to us and we didn't force him to wear a vest, now we're in trouble. I see no reason to expose ourselves like that. It's a vest, just put it on. Anyway, sorry to sidetrack here.
No, like good conversation.
So can I say something? Uh, good, you can hear. Um, given, given this discussion, do I, I personally think that it would be wise to send a letter to these employees notifying them that they are obligated to do this and by a certain time period.
Good idea, good idea. I wasn't gonna, I wasn't even going to. I was just gonna say, I will, I will grab something if you don't mind.
Are you better?
Is it a chair?
Is it just me or is it getting really stuffy in the air?
Yeah, I can walk around and open.
Too lazy to do that.
How, you know, from the draw.
Some of the compressors are a little too.
Oh, it's in the garage.
It's just a church.
It's. Well, no, I've got my whole, whole, whole front airfield. I'm running low. I'm starting to develop Republican tendencies and a periodic subway.
Once again, you're in a drawing guy. I'm very uncomfortable with that.
Okay, let's move on to show these, switch your camera. You know, why to do. So I took the transfer station. I already discussed that. Town bill of the incentive facilities, plowing contractor giving that building maintenance. I'm not sure what building maintenance means. Um, I don't think they'll be the clean, cleaning department.
I'd be like directing the, can you man list?
Yeah, they could be in charge of the meeting.
Scheduling and putting my order out some task lists. I think that's fine news that they're.
Um, going on a site, yes. Technology alone, this is like already done, um. I'm not sure what name is the I T budget really, um.
Oh, we see the website? Is that what you mean?
Isn't the website almost done?
Almost. Okay.
One of the things that we discussed in a previous meeting was having a single point of contact for the website. So everything that gets posted goes through a single person with that.
On me and Bradley at this point.
Is that something that's appropriate for you in, in your duties or should that be slugged off to?
I tried to post myself and I messed up. So I'm still using Bradley to help me figure out how to do it because it's a little more complicated than what he tells me. I end up somewhere where I can't do a thing. And so I can't update things. So I have to eventually just say, hey, can you post this buddy? So that's how this is moment.
But I'm, he likes to, to.
Yes.
It's his baby and I think he enjoys, uh, if you'll be known night or day. Bradley picks out something, food's gone, you know.
I think he waits for my email.
Um. Yes, I totally agree.
You know, and, and same thing because we anticipate the select board assistant to be at at least our select board meetings, probably a fair share of all the other meetings to have a crash course on the, uh, Zoom tube over there. So that all of our meetings can be recorded, although you just joined the, uh, D R B over there. So Jim's gonna be so happy with you. I don't have to do the crash course. It's gonna be so.
Maybe more of us. I still want that.
You don't be on the planning.
Yeah, true. Well, rather. Hey, look at that.
Yeah, Bradley will. But Bradley really wants to participate by Zoom. You know, Zoom, you're going in there.
We haven't done this before any of them because no one just had the, had to fill in the crash course yet, but I'm waiting.
Oh, it's pretty easy.
I just don't dare touch it to fear that it will be, it will blow it up. Yep. That certainly won't be my fault. I will blow it up.
Just have gate crashes, that's all.
By the way, I think that mine needs to school that.
Excellent.
Put together some stuff. I, I do wanna wrap this up.
Yeah. But anyway, so something in the I T or in the, the technology job description might be facilitating electronic meetings or things like that.
I would hate so that he would have to go to every meeting from now on or her, so.
I agree.
That would take up a lot of the time. Yeah, they would take up a lot of the time and nothing left, um. I think it's a matter of us teaching. I, I sent out a letter in January that each mini that they needed to do soon and they needed to teach them how to do the, on everything. I think everyone else has survived except the plan.
Force me to use the night.
Small house. That was a little bumpy, but we got it.
There, at least I'm there.
Yeah.
Who's meeting scheduled?
Yeah, I don't know.
I think it just maybe not oversee hybrid meeting system, which I crossed out, which should probably stay, but it doesn't mean that I can oversee the main.
No, we should.
Understanding system.
Yeah, I know, okay.
Yeah.
Oh, you elected them to do this, like.
You have the right with the left and it's not good.
It's, I thought it was a funny feature. I used to go twelve things. You don't know.
This, you still got.
It's never need a lot of attention.
No.
Right.
So equipment acquisition, um, this, what is that for? Oh, we're not gonna fly right up to the, are we?
I don't.
For this?
Variety. Technology.
Only thing that I'd like to do is more powerful computer. This does hang up sometimes.
About that computer, even.
I know, but we have the, the white computer, which was worse. Um, because we're running three high-definition monitors. Uh, that seems to be the biggest challenge.
We need a more of a video curtain too, don't you?
Did we approve something for that when you did the ceiling mic?
I mean, it was, it wasn't anything specific approved because the cost wasn't that significant, like outside of the existing budget already.
Oh, excellent.
Um.
Neutralize them.
Yeah, so I, I guess I can talk to Belinda and see if there's any money in that budget left from this year. And if there is, we can just get that order. I think that's something that needs to be approved, right? I think it's budgeted already. Sounds good.
Yeah, we can.
Or we could look at it and make sure it's ready to go by next meeting because, because we will be wanting for next meeting. So I guess the next meeting you're going to talk about recapturing all the spent money.
Yeah, well, there is none. But we'll talk about it.
Generally, the I T budget has gone holes by, um, six thousand dollars.
Yeah, if it's over now, we can, this can wait until next.
Obviously, July, yeah.
Right. Law ordinance enforcement.
What about the animal control officer?
To hear under a, over sign of animal control.
Thank you.
Contracting brands. Something. Um, the report requirements. I think you don't even need to put that first one in if that's kind of going to happen anyway. I think this last one, select order, maintain all the records and gender correspondence and signed documents. Crucial to the position.
Is there an area in town or in in this building where those things are stored or is that all about?
I store.
It's your sign of all.
Actually, no, that's going to be outside.
You know, you call it should be in the law.
They're all digitally safe, but I also do a paper pop because you never know. So it is starting to take up room.
You had a, we're going back a couple of, but um you had a question mark here. Implement, manage, report, surveys, under technology. Uh, public communications directed by the select board. Just wondering what your question there.
Uh, I didn't know what I meant. To watch there when you make.
Like write a form, farm posts and all that for important stuff. All creating different survey monkey things and seeing positions, all out of positions, that such.
We're not doing any scanning, nor the like.
No, I'm up to date until I.
You don't have a litter committee anymore. Unless we try to make a resurrect one. And we don't have a law enforcement committee either.
What about the town forest?
Yeah. Are we getting closer on a date? Um.
Money.
What happened, money? I thought I thought it was the brown field.
Someone that was mine and someone that was the brown fields and someone that was finalizing trails. Still a trail.
You don't have this law enforcement survey anymore. But some of these things have been done.
Actually moving towards a website that allows for online tax payments and fill forms.
I'm hoping you put um, yeah, the uh tax bill this year. I do have credit card. We can take over phone and we can also can come in. They can bring in their credit cards. It is charging them two point six five percent because I do not want to pass it on to the other taxpayers.
So can they pay it online?
Not yet. That is a system.
Working towards it.
Yes. But be honest. Put it on our website. I think we'd have to contract with somebody other than you, Minnesota Pay. Uh, they have a link I can put it on, but then it I don't know.
What does yours hold though? Because you can use a credit card to pay for.
I think they use Minnesota Pay, but they have this link and they have better firewalls than we do. So it's a it's a question. I think our server is a little too small for that, but I, Rodney's the only guy I can really talk to about it, other than the person at Minnesota Pay, and she's really, really wants me to do this, but I might want to get hacked. And that's my biggest problem. I mean, I would give response.
And then as far as the like zoning department and dog licenses things, is there any way that we could, are we moving towards?
The dog licenses, you always, you can send it in by mail.
I would use credit card. I mean, wants to know, are we moving?
Having those, having those things available online, fillable forms that are emailed to our zoning admin to do simple building permits and being able to pay different fees and things. It it's listed here under
Yeah.
projects underway. I'm just curious if that's still a thing.
Dogs, I want to be able to put it online, but the network program we use, I'm not sure that that would allow it. So that's a question. I'll actually call Sarah about that and see if they do that. Um, and but I don't know about zoning.
Brett, Kurt, is Bradley working on billable forms? I know that's one of the things that can be town plan. I believe it's in the town plan.
Uh, yeah, the billable forms was actually one of the first requirements. Um, and I assume he is still working on it. I know that there's some complexity in doing it, but that was one of the key features we were looking for.
Right. So he's out of state right now. Um, I guess when we, he comes back, we'll need to touch base with him. How that is progressing. So do we have any, anything more you want to add or delete from this? We will get it out for. Thank you. Repraising contract and number.
Listers have good news. Uh, the board will recall that a couple of weeks ago um you approved a contract with Nemrick for the townwide reassessment. And the best that we could do at that time was to have Nemrick start in twenty twenty seven with completion in twenty twenty eight. And uh, Nemrick contacted us and said they could do it a year earlier. And so a new contract was uh drafted and uh it's just in the Lister office down. And so I'll uh bring that out for you to sign tonight so we can get that back to Nemrick. And will be uh at least another year. Um closer. So in seven, twenty twenty six, completion twenty twenty seven. The news.
I'll turn around so that it can be right on. Still a few more things. Um, onto the two amendments to the agenda. Um, first, one was uh, we need to make a motion to allow fifty thousand dollars of ARPA money to go towards uh paving for the North Walker.
I'll make that motion.
Do you have any further discussion on that?
Where is the paving going to occur?
It didn't occur and it's uh, he wanted to extend the paving when they were here. From where we ended that.
Essentially from the Gulf Road, they stopped somewhere around uh Ray Fleming's.
Yes.
And they extended that down almost to leaves uh the kind of pepper sheds.
Years, yeah.
Yep. And that section of road was in desperate need. There was a lot of patches there from the work that we had done by Amy's. Yeah, that that was in desperate need. Something he had mentioned to me when we talked about it, he thought that he had money in his budget and there were some things miscoded from the flood. I don't know. If that makes.
Um, what happened is it they were, um things were flooded. But it wasn't included to FEMA, so they have not paved.
No, it's the north, yeah, no.
Federal aid highway?
Yeah, federal aid highways and North Walker Road. Um was kind of a misunderstanding between Lucian and the federal aid people. He swears that they told him to go ahead and fix that place up by land affairs. Um, and then when we went to um build them, they said, oh, no, it didn't. It didn't affect the town road. Uh, we're not going to pay.
True.
So that was like uh twenty eight thousand, wasn't it?
It was.
You saw it. So did it go up as far as the road? But trouble is we didn't have that. We don't have any pictures. People don't take enough pictures of damage.
Like right in the main bay, thanks to the red.
Right.
Right, and I'm buying.
Right. But Kurt fought and fought and I fought with him. I called him and it has nothing to do with him.
And we'd already done it, thought, thinking we'd get paid, so we go back and do his budget.
It has to come on this.
Okay. Yeah, I just, I knew that was something he had mentioned. I didn't know what the rest of.
Okay, we have a motion to accept uh the fifty thousand for ARPA for pa- finishing paving. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, so carry. We have to um, we tabled the Flat Iron Road award. Uh, Michael would need to reach out and find out if there were any references um for that project. And I'll let him.
Yeah, the engineer Dexter spoke with him. He reached out to several references for uh King's Exclamation. And they've all come back glowing, so Dexter doesn't see any reason why we shouldn't be able to move forward with with that.
Okay, so I mean a motion, uh, you would create to approve awarding the Flat Iron Road Improvement Project to King Stripping and Exclusion. I can make that.
I'll make that motion.
Very.
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. Do we have any more discussions on that? There are none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. So carry. So we've already awarded the Town Hill Road Improvement Project to N A Menage with thirty eight thousand. But today, when I got the other uh agreements, I received from New England Consulting Engineers, our engineer, the a disclosure of relationship um with um Menage, I mean Menage and Morrisville. Can you hear me, Kurt?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so um New England Consulting Engineers LLC hereby disposes that our firm is under common ownership with NK Menage Incorporated and Morrisville. Since this relationship creates a situation that could be perceived as a conflict of interest for the town of Wonka. Town Hill Road Improvements, we are writing to Stewie that our businesses and practices are organized in a manner to prevent any actual conflict of interest. Our businesses are separately managed and operated to prevent any conflicts. Should the town feel that our relationship creates a situation that will be problematic, NK Menage has agreed to withdraw their bid to allow uh New England Consulting Engineers to continue as engineer for the town. So do you think this will be a problem with FEMA?
Um, no, because this is a uh a bitted project, right, that's going through our purchasing policy guidelines. Um, how, if we were to do a a non-bid um like we did with some of the emergency work, then yes, it would be a problem. Um, and as a matter of fact, you have to fill out a form uh for any non-bitted um contracts specifically for conflict of interest. But since it's bitted and it's adhering to our uh purchasing policy, I don't see any red flags there from FEMA's perspective.
Okay. So what's the board's point? Do you feel there's a problem or are you happy to continue on with NK Menage? The bid amount was thirty eight thousand four seventy eight.
The next nearest bid was forty five, so some significantly more expensive.
King's strength.
I think we should stick with with the non-bid. I think we're pretty well covered in the end.
Thank you.
Take the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, that's preparing. Ready, um. So updates. So I want to update you that um, I believe I sent you a copy of our landfill inspection. I went with him with the landfill last week. Um so our landfill um is closed. It has a cap, a cap on it of, it's clay. It's not plastic or anything. We have to do annual maintenance, but he wants that trees removed there. And um this bonding area filled in and seeded. That needs to be done in the next thirty days. Pictures of other than that, it's good. Bob is going to take care of that. Hopefully.
Yeah, I would take you off.
No, no more.
You just have to be able to get the um the one time to take the dirt up and then, but also if he takes down the trees, should he drag them over to the stone pile or should he?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I also um participated in last week. We had our energy audit for building in the town law. We haven't had a report though.
They even went up in the.
Remember that energy audit is a grand through um the state buildings and general services, the legislature's paying for that. So we can look for that report, um. I sent you my email. Or did I give you my item? Anyway, somehow I shared a copy of a local agreement regarding animal shelter services I just got. Will be on the agenda for next week. You could read that over. I met with um two residents on School Street who basically said they wanted wanted the town to abide by agreements that were made a long time ago concerning the water system. They will be at our next meeting. I think I gave you copies. Did I email it to you?
I sent it to you.
All right, I think I emailed that to you. Um anyone, one of them has to do with an agreement with the school district back in nineteen eighty two. The other one has to do with an agreement with uh Michael Briscoe.
It's our second.
Longhouse in nineteen sixty five about the water. about the water concern. Um, so I didn't respond to them. I met with them, um. My response was, I'd like my lawyers to look at this. Um, oh, no, because it's gonna take forever. But I asked me the board.
A good idea.
Yes.
Um, because this agreement is with the Woketh School District, and I'm not sure if we're obligated to or maybe we are because we were given the property and it comes with the permit. But I'm not a lawyer.
No.
So I didn't answer.
I think we need to be every breakfast.
Okay. I see. So we'll, we'll see that again.
Probably helps.
My last update is a request of, so there is going to be a going away party in the garden June thirteen from five to six thirty. I hope you come and wish Kurt and Del well.
Gladly. So doing it right?
And, um.
Garden committee.
Are you going back to the glade away?
Indeed.
No, we're going to the snow.
No, we're going to the city.
Snow, we've come.
Five, five o'clock and six thirty. But I had a request of whether they could serve wine.
That all.
So I I said I would have.
Who would?
Bottom down wine.
I don't know. Depends on.
I have zero tolerance.
Policy.
One glass, boom.
You're against. It's a good stain. Yeah, I think.
Yeah, thank you. I have so much. Yeah, I just don't think it's necessary. You have cheese.
He can't get out those windows, Jimmy.
No, the screens are on.
Oh, I think I'm lucky. Okay.
Well, they have a platform watch the streams.
All right, so, so you would prefer no. Okay. All right. That's the answer. I think you did. That's all I have. I think you've done that.
I don't know.
Oh, yeah.
May I make our, our motion? May we adjourn to select board meeting. Aye.
No, separate adjourn.